It's 8 o'clock, Stearns County Board of Commissioners will come to order. All right, that worked. Good morning, everyone. Let the record reflect that four of our five commissioners are here. Joe Persky is on his way to Washington to advocate on transportation on our county and region's behalf. So he's unable to be with us today. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Not from the administration.
Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I want to pull number three.
Are you on consent agenda or just on the regular agenda?
On the consent agenda.
Okay, let's do that in just a second, if that's okay. Just on the overall agenda, is there anything, any big changes to be taken? Or can we go ahead and get a motion to-
I'll move to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Okay, public access forum. Do we have anyone online who has requested to speak? Is there anyone here requesting to speak? All right, I see none. We do want to remind people living in Stearns County, if you would like to come and speak on an issue not on our agenda, either in person or virtually, we love to hear your comments. You also can email if you have any comments, ideas, suggestions. Okay, consent agenda. Commissioner Lenzmeyer would like to pull number three. Any other items? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number three?
I'd move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
I could take up my, if you'd allow it-
Do it now?
I'd take up my objection on number three. And it's not an objection, but at one time we had a debate on the wisdom and the comparison of purchase versus lease on vehicles. And my question on number three, what prompted, when I looked at number three was, I haven't heard that talked about for a long time. Is that still a thought process that's in place? Or what happens with our vehicle purchases? There's pros and cons to both alternatives. So it would make sense if we did both. At least we'd back then. Where are we at with that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, we do have a combination of leased vehicles and purchased vehicles. The balance of that, I think others could answer. Fifty-fifty is what, she's telling me it's half and half.
Oh, we're still doing that?
And we're talking about squad cars, not all other vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Do you want me then to move to approve?
That would be great.
All right, I move approval of number three.
Great, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Thanks.
Thanks, that's a good question, good thing for us all to know. Appreciate that, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Okay, our next item is we have a public hearing. We will be conducting a public hearing to consider interim use permit applications submitted by USS Great River Solar and Meadowbrook Dairy Farm. Ms. Berg?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Berg Environmental Services. Okay, in front of you today is a conditional interim use permit submitted by USS Great River Solar of Minneapolis for Meadowbrook Dairy Farm of Sartell. At your August 24th meeting, the board voted to hold a public hearing before making a decision on this request. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this request and on a four to three vote, recommended denial. This is a one megawatt solar garden located in the A-40 zoning district and is located in Section 33 of Brockway Township. The reason this is in front of you as an interim use permit is based on the recent ordinance changes this spring, which allow for one megawatt on a parcel to be permitted and then the second to be through an interim use. The planning commission's findings are listed on your packet page 133 through 136. I did reach out to Brockway Township and talk to George Fiedler, the Chair of Brockway Township, asking if they had any comments and he said he would get me some if they had any and I did not get any from him today. In terms of public testimony that was submitted, I believe the board received an email from Bob Heim of Heim Milling Company. We received that over the weekend and then also Urderman's, the applicants, did submit an email to you as well. Those are the only two letters that we received and I do not believe there's anybody online to testify.
For the public, would you mind just summarizing what each of those have communicated?
Yes, so Urderman's, the property owner's email related to being able to diversify their farming operation and hoped that the board would consider their request in support. And Bob Heim's email related to his understanding of solar gardens is it's able for, it's able to allow the farmers to diversify their operation and allow for other options on their farm and basically help sustain the egg economy by supporting their operations, which in turn supports others.
Thank you.
So with that, Madam Chair, members of the board, unless there's any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Williams.
Did you say we don't have anybody? I thought we did have a couple of people that were going to testify on the webex.
So, Madam Chair, Mike, we do have some applicants with USS Solar that are going to testify. We don't have any testifiers, we don't have any members of the public online.
Thank you for that, Claire.
And are they wanting to actually speak as part of the public hearing? Are they available for questions or both?
I will let Ms. Sims handle that question because she's here in person and she'll be taking the lead on that.
Okay, well, obviously when people come and travel, it's always a good thing to give them an opportunity to speak. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and open our public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll just state, since I'm not able to share my screen today, if the control room wants to show a map, it would be packet page 177. That would be, that would give you a visual representation of how the solar farm would look along with the road and the proposed buffer. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, which page again?
Packet page 177.
Okay, great. Hopefully the control room is able to put that up for people to see.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone present or online who wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michelle Sims, I'm with USS Solar, address is 100 North Sixth Street, number 410B, Minneapolis. So yes, I'll provide a few remarks on behalf of the project today. As I mentioned, I'm from USS Solar. USS Solar is a Minnesota-based company that develops, owns and operates community solar gardens. Here to discuss our application for an interim use permit to construct, own and operate a one megawatt solar farm on 7.83 acres of the parcel owned by Meadowbrook Dairy Farm.
Excuse me, I was going to say you have to apparently almost eat it.
Okay, okay. Is this better? Yes, good?
Yes, it'll be better for the people at home.
Awesome. So yes, as Ms. Berg just mentioned, John and Mary Lou Urderman were unable to attend today's meeting due to their work schedules, but they did send over a note last week just requesting that you approve their interim use permit. So the project is called USS Great River Solar LLC. It'll be located on the southeastern quadrant of Meadowbrook Dairy Farm's parcel. It's tucked kind of behind the existing solar farm there. Stearns County's ordinance allows for a second solar garden on a property through the interim use permit process, which is nearly identical to the requirements for all solar gardens prior to the ordinance change this spring. This project is not located on prime farmland per the USDA prime farmland map that Stearns County has implemented as their definition of prime farmland at this time. And to give an overview of how much farmland is actually being used by this proposed project, it would use just slightly over one one thousandth of one percent of the farmland in Stearns County. And in order to use one percent of the total farmland in the county, the county would need to actually permit 830 solar farms of this size. So along with that, the vast majority of farmland in the county is current, that is converted into non-egg uses from egg is for non-solar development. And other than this existing solar farm, the next closest solar farm under the county's jurisdiction is 9.9 miles away as the crow flies. This proposed project today, it's over a mile from the Sartell city limits, over half a mile from the Sartell expansion zone, over two miles from the St. Stephen's city limits and expansion zone. And Brockway Township is aware of the project and as far as we know, has not submitted any comments with concerns at this time. The project meets your required setbacks and it'll be screened along the north and eastern fence lines and through the approved rezoning process for this property and throughout this IUP process, not a single neighbor has voiced any concerns. This project will generate enough clean energy to power approximately 225 homes annually and most of it will be consumed by the residences, businesses, public entities in Sartell, St. Stephen, LaSoc and St. Cloud areas. Couple notes on visual impact, so we create to, we seek to create no visual impact and preserve Stearns County's character. The nearest neighboring home is located 343 feet east of the proposed project. Their view will be buffered by existing and new screening. Next nearest homes are 515 feet northeast and 840 feet southeast of the solar farm. Both of these have swaths of trees separating their view from the project. And the Urderman's property then extends 1,400 feet north of the project and 1,800 feet west of the project. I've reached out to these surrounding neighbors, nobody had any concern regarding the proposed project. One of the neighbors to the south actually said he likes it and he wishes he could just plug his farming equipment into the solar garden directly. And so therefore there is no visual impact to any of the neighboring residences or public roadways. And now if it's okay with you, I have a 50-second video showing what our solar gardens look like so I can just kind of hold it for you on my computer. Let's do a tour of a solar garden developed by USS Solar. This provides clean electricity to the local community and costs to our subscribers. The entire solar garden is linked to native grass and pollinator-friendly habitat. All half of this parcel uses the sun to cultivate core. The other half uses the sun to cultivate clean electricity. We make communities brighter with one solar garden at a time.
And it would be, would it be possible to email that to staff just so we can have it for the record?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for watching that. Continuing on, another thing to note, the solar panels are made out of the same materials as laptops and cell phones, silicon glass, silver and copper. There's no hazardous materials involved whatsoever in the project. Couple notes on removal process, so our lease with the Urderman's requires us to fully decommission the site. The PV modules will be removed and resold on the open market. They're actually warranted to be producing 80% of their day one capacity in, or day one output in year 30. So if our lease extends for 40 years, for example, they're still going to be producing around 74% of their day one capacity. The remaining materials, along with any panels that need to be recycled for whatever reason, will be recycled at Albany Recycling Center. This is 25.5 mile drive from the project. After decommissioning, the project site can then be converted to other uses in accordance with applicable land use regulations and whatever the landowners should desire at that time. In our application, we had proposed providing a supplemental fee along with a decommissioning surety to the county to provide more direct value to the community in light of some of the conversations recently with taxation. However, we've learned that the county does not accept supplemental fees, so we're unable to provide this. We do still offer a decommissioning surety and I have sent over some materials in the past describing that we believe $180,000 is much too high for what it will actually cost. However, we will agree to provide that decommissioning surety of $180,000. Couple notes on the length of term, so because this is an interim use permit, it has to have an end date. And we are requesting a 41-year term for three reasons. The first is that our project will be constructed within one year of the permit date, which would then allow for 40 years of operation. Second, our lease agreement with Meadowbrook lasts for a maximum of 40 years. And third, as mentioned before, the solar panels are warranted to be producing 80% of day one capacity in year 30, so they'll still be producing quite a bit of valuable electricity in 40 years. And with that, the remaining 144 acres of the parcel is available for farming and potential future development, whatever the landowner and county, at the landowners and counties discretion. Couple notes on community benefits, so these projects offer direct financial benefit to Stearns County residences, businesses and public entities. Notable entities in the county such as Sartell-St. Stephen's schools, the City of St. Cloud actually are subscribers themselves and save money through the solar projects. And the community will also benefit from our private investment in pollinator-friendly habitat, increases nearby crop yields and improve soil, water and air quality. And I believe later on, Dustin Van Ness with Bear Honey is going to provide a few comments on the value of the pollinator-friendly solar gardens. And I also actually brought along some bread and honey, which Angie and I will set up for all of you after the hearing. It's from one of our solar gardens in Big Lake, so it's harvested right there on site and that's something that we could also implement here. And we have some plans in the works to have apiaries on site, on Stearns County sites in the coming years. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank county staff for their diligent work on this project. I worked closely with Jennifer and Angie to ensure our application is compliant with the county land use ordinance, which permits a second one-megawatt solar garden on its parcel in an agricultural 40 district with an interim use permit. We have done everything possible to bring benefits to the community while integrating with its existing character. This is an interim use permit application, we meet all of the county's ordinance requirements for approval. And so we request an objective analysis of the project, the applicable ordinance and would respectfully request that the Stearns County Board of Commissioners approve our application for IUP. Thanks for listening and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Mergan?
You made a statement that this is not prime farmland?
Yes, Commissioner Mergan, in the map provided to us to outline whether it is in prime farmland or not, this parcel in this specific area is not considered prime farmland per the USDA map.
And just really quickly, is this the one that was changed to farmland from residential? It previously been a residential, it was not a farm previously?
Yeah.
It was as residential?
I'm looking on page 138, the threshold for prime farmland, 65 LISA score. And 138, it says that this one has a LISA score of 72.8.
Commissioner Mergan-
So that would be prime farmland.
I, that is something that the county may need to revisit in their application materials because under, under the designation we've been given to say whether it's prime farmland or not, under that map that's in the comprehensive plan, it is not considered prime farmland. And so there may be some discrepancy in the county's materials, but under all applicable documents, this is not considered prime farmland and as far as I believe, there is nothing in this zoning ordinance that says that solar gardens cannot be located on prime farmland.
Commissioner Mergan, let's ask staff about, help us understand, I don't know if it's the part of the land or what it is. I also understand that LISA scores are not something because of what this is that we're really looking at anymore. But is, do you want to come up and answer that, Ms. Berg?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergan. In the email I sent last week, it was the planning commission had a bunch of questions during this public hearing and I attempted to address the difference between the LISA score and prime farmland. And so it is not a discrepancy in the comp plan for prime farmland. The prime farmland soils map that's adopted in the comprehensive plan is based on the USDA criteria and their factors. And I certainly am not going to read it all because it's several pages from the USDA prime farmland definition, but that is what Stearns County has adopted in the comprehensive plan. The LISA score, in this case, yes, is 72. Now, it's really a policy decision that the county board needs to make if you believe solar is conversion of farmland. The LISA score was adopted back in the early 2000s as a way to gauge land for permanent conversion of land. So the non, the threshold was set at 65, so if you're over 65, it shouldn't be converted to residential use. And I also attempted to answer that in that, in that same narrative, where the LISA came from, what the criteria and the factors are related to that. So unless you have any other questions, the map is not incorrect in the comprehensive plan, you're just looking at two different factors.
So there are two different factors and the LISA score relates solely to whether the conversion, how it would be impacted and because solar can be removed and a crop can be planted, it's different than if a building was there and we needed to remove the building.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, and also indicated in that same narrative is that we are going to not be running LISA scores in the future and we don't run LISA scores for any other conversion for farm purposes or mining, towers, et cetera. And so this became apparent during the last several months that this is a confusing and we're not really treating all land uses the same when we look at the LISA for solar.
It can be confusing. Thank you. Commissioner Notch?
Just one clarification, the financial, or decommissioning fee is $185,000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, and this is probably another question related to, most of them that have come across have been like 25-year permits? Is this the first one with 41 years?
Ms. Berg?
I don't recall.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, so Michelle can answer that this is your first interim use permit in front of you and so in the past, they've all been conditional use permits and those do not have timeframes associated with them. But what the solar developers will present to you is about 25, 30 years, that's typically the terms of the lease. And so yes, this is a different, this is a different timeline and I'll let Michelle explain why. I think that was asked at the planning commission as well.
So under the conditional use permit, because there isn't an end, it could go on much longer or it could theoretically go shorter, but determined by the lease or a renewal of the lease?
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioners? Yeah, just to provide some additional context into the 40-year request. So our agreement with Xcel Energy, our interconnection agreement, is 25 years long. And typically, we sign a lease with some extension options because there is, down the road, we're thinking that there will be opportunities to renew with Xcel or perhaps extend the program in some nature. And so that's the reason behind the 40-year request for interim use permit. And as Angie stated, prior to implementing the interim use permit process, the CUPs were, there's no end date on those, so they could go as shorter as long as desired. But because this does have an end date, that's the reason we're requesting the 41-year term. Yeah.
So just looking at Ms. Berg, so this is, would rather, that's similar to when we've had the gravel production, et cetera. Those all have had numbers attached to them because they were interim, right? Okay, thank you, that helps, helps me better understand it. Other questions? Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, my question is related to if at some point, whether it's the end of the 25-year lease, if, let's say, this eight-acre parcel has one megawatt, if the panels get better and that same eight acres can have three megawatts and you, let's say, refurbish the solar garden or farm and now it can fit two megawatts, does that have to come back then to the county as a change?
You can go first, okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Notch, I believe because this is for a one-megawatt interim use permit, if we, in any case, were going to add more panels or upgrade them, I'm, I think we would need to come back just because all that we would be permitted for is a one-megawatt community solar garden. And also, at this point, there is no financially feasible way to build over a one-megawatt solar project, so there would be things that we need to change at the state level too in order for us to do that. I think it would have to be a state path and then also a permit adjustment of some sort with the county. So, thank you.
Ms. Berg, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The planning commission had that similar question, which I attempted to answer in that narrative from a couple of weeks ago. And we would, the county would have to revisit its ordinance at the time the legislature would make a change to the community solar garden program. But as it stands right now, if the panels become, as they are, becoming more efficient and let's say the law changed and allowed for two or three megawatt, then we, the county would have to look at changing the ordinance to allow the same. The other thing I was going to comment on related to the term of the permit is interim use permit by law is good for, valid for a period of time, it's a duration or an event. So not to throw a wrench in this, but you could also consider the event to be something related to the interconnect agreement or the lease or something else. I know that that's not what they're proposing, but you could, at some point, you might see that. You might see a company ask for that. So just remember interim use permit is an event or, a vent or a duration.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's helpful. Other questions? Okay, seeing, seeing none at this time, unless you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'll just provide one other comment. There was a case that recently, a solar garden was denied in a different county in Minnesota on the grounds of prime farmland and that was brought to the Minnesota State Court of Appeals. And a few words from the opinion provided by the State Court of Appeals basically read that the consideration of prime farmland was not a condition listed in the county's ordering ordinance for the board's consideration and is therefore a legally insufficient reason for denial. Quote, "A denial would be arbitrary if it was established that all of the standards specified by the ordinance as a condition to granting the permit have been met." So I just want to comment that we meet, we meet everything provided in this ordinance. We, we have done everything possible to make sure that we can bring the most benefits to the community and this isn't allowed use in the county through the interim use permit process. So we would just request approval of the proposed project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present wishing to speak on this matter? Or do we have someone online?
Hi, this is Dustin Venas. I'm the owner and founder of Bear Honey. I apologize, a little bit late when we're out. I'm out in the bee fields right now.
No, welcome. Go ahead.
But I wanted to call in and show my support for this project. We work with US Solar for several years now, putting hives on, on their, their solar arrays that are planted for pollinier-friendly habitat. And what we've experienced over the years, working with them, is a positive relationship. And this here in particular, we have a 40% larger harvest on US solar land than we do off of it. So I can testify that this is, you know, we were just talking about prime agricultural farmland, that this is still an agricultural use, and is essential to the growth of my business.
Thank you. Are there any questions for him? Commissioner Notch?
This might be one for either US Solar or for Dustin. Do you put, are the hives outside of the fenced-in area?
They are. They are just adjacent to the hive fencing. I might be able to show you one right now if my internet connection is good enough. I'm actually at one right now. Doesn't look like it's allowing me to do video. I'm sorry. But yes, we, we line them along the fence, so that they're, they're benefiting from the cyclically blooming pollinier-friendly habitat that's with inside the fence. So the, the pollinier habitat with inside the fence provide pollen from our bees, for our bees, which is essential to raising young bees and maintaining large populations within the side, the hive, which then results in larger harvest because there's more bees in each hive to go harvest honey.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dustin. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this public hearing? Don't see a new person, so feel free to...
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just found a picture, actually, from the site in Big Lake, and I can come walk it around.
Okay, that's fine.
So this is Dustin and Nicholas, who is an apiary native. And you can see they're right outside the fence, and they're harvesting from the apiary. So this is just an image of kind of what it looks like. You can't really see the apiary itself, but you can see them harvesting the honey from the site. And there'll be seeds on the first apiary.
Smart, smart thing. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Last call. Hearing done. We'll close the public hearing. Members.
I would suggest to staff, in situations where someone wants to share exhibits with the board, that the exhibits be submitted to the county prior to the meeting, so that we can make them part of the broadcast and show them up on the big screen. I appreciate the intent of sharing the information, as you have done. But for the effort it takes to put those types of displays together, they'll be more effective if we can put them up on the big screen, and then also put, make them part of the permanent record, because it's nice to be able to go back and review this stuff at a later date, especially with an issue like this, which is an evolving issue. Whatever we do today will certainly not be the end of this. In fact, we might be closer to the beginning at this point than the end. So just relative to the effort it takes to submit this stuff, I'd appreciate that in the future.
Totally agree, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Appreciate both, both of you attempting to give us some additional visuals. And it would have been particularly cool to see something from the field, live, but our technology isn't quite working that way yet. Maybe when we get broadband through the region, Dr. Williams, it'll be a little bit easier. But yes, to the extent we can have them ahead of time. And again, for the things that have been shown to the board members, please give them to staff so we can connect them up.
What are our time, what are our timeline limitations on this? A lot of times on these matters, we have to act in a certain timeframe. Otherwise, this, there's statutes in place that in effect, we've approved it. What's our limitation on this?
Ms. Berg, do you want to come and refresh our memories on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I'm looking it up as we speak.
All right.
While you're looking it up, Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, just as a side note, I did have some staff do a little research on the rezonings we've had done since 2015, from egg zone to residential, and also the solar. And in my mind, this kind of plays out, I think, the way it's supposed to. So, so far, there's 441 acres that have been, you know, designated for solar use with a LISA score, which I understand we should really address, you know, there, is there really a purpose for that, at 68? So if you want to have something that's going to allow land to be returned to farming, in my mind, that would fit. Because of the 806 acres that we've allowed to be rezoned, the average LISA score in them was 63. So if the threshold is 65, if you'd keep using that, you could kind of say, well, you know, we're, we're doing it the right way because the lower quality land is actually being converted. Whereas the land that still could one day go back into farming is at either interim use or conditional use, that would allow it to one day go back with minimal effort. That's kind of the, the gist of what I got out of the information I requested.
Thank you. That's interesting. Ms. Berg, did you find it?
Yes, the deadline to act under the 60-day rule is November 16th. And that would be without USS Solar and the Udomens granting an extension.
Nope. So the 60 days started when?
And so this particular application's in progress. If we were to explore a moratorium on this, because this is becoming increasingly controversial, the, the almost overwhelming data that's been presented to the county board is of a cheerleading nature. My, my sense of it is that in the long run, this will be much like gravel pits, where the gravel pits once, all the easily accessed minerals are taken out, they become orphaned projects. Granted, by the time it gets to that point on these types of projects, there's a reasonable assumption none of us will be here. It'll be some future boards situation. But I think we need to do a ton of thinking on this, considering things like decommissioning and so forth. And I don't know the best way to do that, because if we table this, it, it's the same as approving this, the way I understand it, unless I miss on the point. So I'm in a bit of a dilemma here. We don't have enough background yet.
So first off, can you tell us when the 60 days clock started for this particular one? Because 60 days from today isn't when the, the clock starts, is it?
Yes, and I, I apologize. The, the common terminology is a 60-day rule. That's how it's written in statute. But it's actually 120 days.
Okay.
Because you have 60 days to, within the first 60 days, the government can grant itself an extension for another 60 days, which we automatically do when the Planning Commission denies and the county board sets their own public hearing. It gives us a little bit more wiggle room.
Okay.
So the, the 120 days started on July 19th, and would be, the due date would be November 16th, which happens to be a board meeting. However, you, you could, I mean, you do have several meetings between now and then. That would be up to the board if you would want to table or continue this. As Commissioner Lenzmeyer indicated, absent making a decision at all, it's granted by law.
And can you remind us, because clearly, we all know there's other, other items out there of interest, what are the factors for the board to consider versus the state or some other entity? What are the things that we're supposed to consider in approving or denying this?
Madam Chair, members of the board, what, what interim use permits allow you to do is look at the findings of fact. And I would say that they would relate to compatibility with the comprehensive plan. Is it in compliance with the local ordinance? There's a question related to, has the applicant sufficiently demonstrated that they can, that they are meeting the ordinance requirements? And then there's various factors related to if economic considerations were brought up. Was there any information from the township submitted? The three, the three primary criteria, criteria would be compliance with the comp plan, compliance with the zoning ordinance, and did the applicant demonstrate that they are meeting the requirements? That's what the board should be looking at for, for any interim use.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, is there's, what, what additional information would you like to see on this particular project? I know you're, you're raising some questions from a broader nature, too, which clearly we want to keep looking at all, all impacts.
They give me too much credit. I don't particularly know what I'm talking about. But the punchline is, is I want to see us take a, a long view, end-of-life considerations. The, most of the stuff that we've been getting is pretty positive stuff, but maybe our approach needs some adjustments. Should we be giving or asking the township for more, in every case, for more direct participation in this process? The, when we get an application like this, can we approve something that isn't, doesn't exactly match the request? For example, can we downsize a request and approve something that is of smaller scope? The comeback there would be, well, you already got the one megawatt. Well, that puts it out there, but it doesn't, it doesn't address the bulk of my concerns. But the, most of what I'm concerned with is the long-term, you know, and what's happening in the future. On one hand, you hear about how these things have a 30-year life. Well, effectively, they have about half of that before the efficiency deteriorates to the point where perhaps the panels need to be replaced, or should be replaced. But I don't envision them being replaced without another subsidy. So, and all of that is predicated on being able to predict the future. And that leaves a lot of questions open. So, yeah, I just raised a whole lot more questions than what any answer staff could provide. But I think that's indicative of the complexity of, and the nature of these requests. I'm not prepared to make a decision on this today, so that's why I asked what our timeline is. But I don't want to see us agree on an extension unless we also at least give staff a general idea on what else it is we need to know, which I don't know what we need to know.
Commissioner Notch?
I can have two questions. One relates to, can the board decide to change, let's say, from a 41-year to a 25-year? And I don't know if you want to answer that one first.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, if the board would decide that that would suit the ordinance requirements and the, and the compliance with the comprehensive plan better than what the proposal is, you could do that. I hate to keep likening it to mining, but that's our most familiar interim use, or a second home on a farm, for example. If there would be some reason why you think a shorter period of time is more relevant, because maybe there's growth coming in the area, or the farm might not be there, in those other examples, then the board would need to make a connection or a relationship to reducing the timeframe.
Okay. And then the other question is, can either the solar companies or staff find decommissioning information from other countries, like Europe, where they've been using solar for a lot longer? You know, that, some of that could be presented. I mean, if we're in an industry that's kind of in infancy, you know, you kind of go up to that maturity, and, you know, you're, we're probably not at the level where you'll find anybody recycling anything yet.
Ms. Berg?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, I, I struggle to think that Shelley and I and others are going to be able to do a better job than what the MPCA is doing and AMC.
Oh, okay.
You know, even nationwide, the, the groups that I attend, the, the webinars I've attended and shared with you, screenshots, or summaries, or the actual presentations are, are doing that. I, there's no decision made yet. And I think that's also what you heard at your, at your meeting in July from the MPCA, is they're still in the process of determining what is decommissioning, recycling, disposal going to look like. So, yes, I, I think that that is being studied. I don't think that it's, it's the same, it's certainly not the same market, and it's nothing that, that, that staff is going to be able to do a, a good job for you.
So a couple of things along with that. I mean, so we have, we've, we're requiring the surety, and we've increased the numbers because we do care about that. We want to make sure that we're not caught with the bag, and that frankly, to the extent, while the property owner needs to work out their own contractual agreements, that we're, we're doing our best to be protecting them. And that we are requiring a plan, or at least some agreement with, yes, we will move these. So that, those are two things, that, those are things that we've been able to do. And in some ways, we could liken it to what happens with buildings that fall down on a farm. Are we going in and telling people what to do with that? Are we telling people, you know, there's a number of things that we're actually requiring that we don't require of anything else I can think of. So it's an important thing. It's certainly going to be nothing like what's going to have, looks like, might be happening in Becker with a very large, very, 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 very large solar array. And then I was wondering, Ms. Sims, could you come up and talk a little bit? Because we have had questions, you know, the efficacy, or the, the length, the longevity of current solar plants, the industry, the product has been changing, and our computers have changed, everything else keeps changing. So can you at least talk us through kind of that information? Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think we've all heard some of those numbers. What, what is the diminishing rate? Do you anticipate you'd be replacing these? What happens to that? I mean, that's, those are, those are, those are questions that have been raised.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, as I stated earlier in my remarks, these panels are warranted to be producing 80% of their starting capacity in 30 years, which I can't do the math off the top of my head, but that's maybe, I mean, typically, we model for about a 0.5% degradation a year, and they are warranted at that value of still producing 80% in 30 years as well. So we, honestly, we have really not seen things take a nosedive whatsoever. They, they slightly diminish over time, as does your computer or your phone, but they actually last quite a bit longer than those pieces of technology. And so that's, I mean, that is the number that we have. That's what we've seen so far. And so that's, I mean, that is the number that we have. That's what we've seen so far. I don't believe that they are diminishing faster than that. And my colleague, David Watts, Director of Project Development, is also on the line today. He may have something to add to that.
The reason, the reason why I asked is certainly, you know, 15 years ago, they were at a different level than they are now. And it's, it helps us to know what we're talking, you know, part of your point, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think, is, is do we know what we're talking about? Do we know what's really being presented? Because if it's something that's going to diminish that quickly, that may factor into a decision. I don't know if anybody has any questions for him. I just wanted to make sure since you were here that you got a chance to speak.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I also wanted to add regarding decommissioning, I hear that there's some uncertainty from the board. We, we did provide a very detailed decommissioning plan. We've talked to Justin, who owns Albany Recycling Centers. He's given us a full overview of how we can recycle every material involved in the solar garden, starting with the panels, including the transformer, including the inverters, including the concrete pads. It can all be done right here in Albany, Stearns County business today. And so I know that there is a lot of uncertainty, but there are businesses out there doing that today. And as Angie mentioned, the MPCA is the expert here. They're working on plans in the next couple of years that will unveil like a full, much more detailed plan for everything across the state. And so I just wanted to comment on that, that this is out there, it is happening today. You can call him up after the meeting if you would like, and he'll tell you the same thing.
Madam Chair, could I join in from online?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on hold just for a second, because I want to see if anybody wants any more information about this right now, if that's okay. Do you want to hear anything more right now on this?
Hmm, let's hear mine.
All right, let's go ahead. Welcome. Just, please make sure you're stating your name for the record, Mr. Watts.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. This is David Watts, Director of Development at US Solar. I just wanted to add a little bit of context to a few different points that are being made, not necessarily just decommissioning, but relating to the term. Again, the reason, just to put it really simply, the reason that a 40-year IUP has been requested is because the landowner has entered into a 40-year agreement with US Solar for this project. So it makes sense to tie the land use permit to the land lease. But just for your reference, there could never be a project like this financed if the term was less than 30 years. They'll, they'll look at a 30-year pro forma. So having a permit for less than 30 years is the equivalent of denying a project. Regarding the decommissioning, with the MPCA, you can also look at what they've done historically. And what they've done historically is an average of $72,000 per megawatt, if you adjust to today's equipment. And that's actually not required on day one. That's required at year 15. So, you know, because we've never seen decommissioning actually occur, because the degradation of solar panels is so minor, we just haven't seen it happen in mass scale. We do see it happen in the event of breakage. So if someone installing a solar panel accidentally breaks it, we know that we can go recycle it today at the Albany Recycling Center. But there's just no business reason why decommissioning would occur today. And so that's why the MPCA doesn't require money today. It's just a long way of saying that this has been considered by a lot of experts from around the world and here locally in Minnesota. And none of them are saying this is, this is an issue so great that we cannot permit them. They're just saying, let's have a little bit of additional financial assurance on our side, but let's do it in 15 years. Just really quickly on the thought of tabling it, I'm not exactly sure, as the applicant, what we're being asked to do if this were to be tabled. And obviously, you know, if there are criteria of the ordinance, and it's unclear to the board if we meet those criteria, then please let us know which criteria those are, and we'll provide further clarification. But as it stands right now, I feel like we've done a sufficient job of demonstrating that we meet every criteria of the ordinance, and it isn't allowed use through that IUP process. We follow that very closely in coordination with staff. We've received no public opposition, and we've mitigated any perceived issues to the fullest extent possible. And then just quickly on the agricultural idea of, you know, converting something out of agricultural land, I just want to plainly restate that we are not doing that. This supports the Meadowbrook Dairy Agricultural Business, as the Urderns have stated. And the owner of Bear Honey is in front of you right now, telling you that it's essential for the growth of his agricultural business as well. And further, the pollinator-friendly habitat, you know, it restores the soils, making them better for farming in the future, and increasing crop yields nearby due to the increased pollination. If this wasn't, you know, an agricultural use, then why would the Farm Bureau and the Farmers Union both support community solar? I mean, there's a reason that they support community solar and not strip malls or nuclear power plants. So with all that in mind, we feel that we have demonstrated that we meet the criteria of the ordinance. And if there's something that you still have questions on, we'll be happy to take that back and provide more clarification. But if you agree we have met those criteria, we respectfully request approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Any questions for him? Thank you.
I'm not prepared to approve this today, but I would appreciate if this doesn't get approved today. I would appreciate suggestions, ideas, concepts on what else we can determine at this point. That would be helpful in the long run, because this isn't the last of these requests that we will see relative to the potential threat of litigation. I'm generally not in favor of encouraging litigation, but sometimes that does provide the answers that are, that come out of an experience like that, does give us a path forward that, like it or not, we have to follow. So I'm not prescribing this as a solution. I'm just offering to my esteemed colleagues here, this isn't, potential litigation isn't a reason for us to run away from the controversy. This will have to be settled out one way or the other, long run. On one hand, the discussion of 25-year and 40-year time cycles has some merit. But the reality is, the current decision makers, and for that matter, the current property owners, the likelihood of them being around, available at that point is, becomes less and less likely. But this does, I think that, you know, getting back to the Chair's initial point, that this might have, this idea might have more in common with our gravel pit experience than at first blush it would appear to have. But that's where I'm at now. If we delay a decision on this, what is it we want to find out? I'd appreciate some insight here from staff, colleagues, or whatever. That's where I'm at.
Commissioner Notch.
And, you know, in part of that, Lee, you're probably correct. You know, the generation won't be there, but it also might allow their next generation to make an income off of that project as well. So it's, I don't think, you know, that would be lost, so to speak, unless, you know, they choose to.
Or to fix our mistakes, so we're giving them some work, huh?
You know, so I, you know, you know, that can be taken either way. It's kind of like how your farms are going now, where they keep the land, they sell the building site because the land has good rent values. So the next generation basically can hold on to land and capitalize on the returns on the land as an investment, which, you know, obviously, this could be a family investment for a long time, just like, you know, I know they have another one on the same property. But, you know, one of the other things, you know, in reviewing what the Planning Commission, you know, where they said the proposal does not conform to their following goals, policies from the Stearns County Comp Plan, under the ag use policies, they said it doesn't conform with encouraged sustainable ag practices that protect prime farmland and water resources. Well, in my mind, from what we heard from, you know, Dustin, and the fact that this parcel of ground is under irrigation, which now won't be irrigated, you know, that, in my mind, is a protection of a groundwater source, you know, not only from community encroachment, you know, but any type of further development, whether it's, you know, the ag land in the area, putting more irrigators out, you know. So that one, you know, I would question if that's actually not a conformity, you know, that would be part of this project. But again, I guess, you know, we're, we're here to make the decision.
Yeah.
Is the public hearing closed?
Yep. Public hearing's closed.
Well, I guess.
Madam Chair, if I could add in, this is Dustin with Bear Honey again, that, you know, we're committed to putting hives on this land and keeping it in agriculture production. And the native prairies that are planted on this land have regenerative deep soil roots that even when we're thinking about like the decommissioning of this project at the end and the actual pulling out of the panels, the land that's going to be left at the end of these projects is going to be plus prime, in that the soil conditions are going to be so high nitrogen fix that, that because of the prairie planting that were on these pieces of land, that there'll be, you know, essentially like prime land that is available for planting in the future. While in the interim, our hives are benefiting highly from this because of the, the nature of, you know, Stearns County and many counties around Minnesota, the abundance of industrialized farmland and row cropping has provided a limitation for our bees, and that's when the soybeans or the corn are in bloom or tasseling, that that, you know, acreage is only available for bees to harvest pollen from those, from those sites during that, that one bloom, because there's nothing else blooming. Whereas these sites, they have a cyclically blooming cycle of native prairies or native prairie flowers that benefits our bees throughout the entire season. So it increases the valuable land to us when we're placing hives. And, and in the future, the soil is being regenerated. And David, you might have some research on that. I know that it's available. I've seen it at other conferences that we're part of. And there's ongoing research, because this is a new, new concept. There's ongoing research about the benefits of the habitat that's being made for upland game birds like pheasants, that we've worked with pheasants forever and promote these projects as well. So I just wanted to add that in there while we're talking about agricultural. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Notch.
I'll just say, one of the reasons I'd be in favor of this, number one, is you're protecting this land, you know, no matter how you want to view it, from future development. We all know where eventually this land and the surrounding land is probably going to get eaten up into residential properties. You know, in my mind, this is a way, it's kind of like creating parks. You're creating an area that's going to be preserved for generations. Yeah, we don't know what the decommissioning, if there ever is any, could be. But I think in reality, this is, you could almost say another green space potential, because it's not going to have, the ground's not going to be disturbed, it's not going to be, you know, made into either residential development, the commercial development. You know, we've seen, you know, just, where is it? Just, I forget what county road that is that goes out where the new trout wells is. You know, there we approved, you know, to take how many acres, put a commercial building on. If you drove by it, I mean, they pushed, you know, everything off. And, you know, that, that'll never be farmed. I mean, that was irrigated cornfield. You know, to me, this is something that is a generational thing that is going to be there. I don't know. It's, that's just my take on it.
Well, that's what we're here for.
For me, kind of similarly, where, what I liked about, and we had lots of public opportunity and input on our planning process, was trying to figure out how we could be more flexible, permit our ag owners, our property owners, some flexibility that we weren't coming in and telling them every single thing they could be doing, as long as it was essentially safe, right? So here, we've gotten the opportunity for perhaps that generational change, some financial stability, the pollinators at a time that we are sorely needing more. I hadn't heard, you know, Lee, when you were talking about, as we're learning more things, I hadn't heard about the aviaries being a possibility. But that adds yet another opportunity on the land for another ag-related business opportunity. And as we have been indicating, you know, we want to listen to if neighbors have a problem. We're trying to with townships that both want to keep ag, but then want to develop, try to balance all of that. This in a way is that best of both worlds, because this one was converted from residential. This isn't, this is actually a broader ag use than it ever would have had. So that's why I support this. Do I think personally that we need to keep asking good questions and putting the feet to the fire of others? Yeah. But as we're talking about one of our Stearns County property owners, this is, it's, to me, Lee, it's really different than the gravel. I brought up the gravel because of the term. I was just trying to think of something that we had to give a term, or that we might have some pushback, which we do right now. But it's very different in that it could be converted at any time back to another purpose. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I didn't make a motion to recommend approval of the IUP as requested.
Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that. Further discussion? Commissioner Mergan.
I'm just going to have to follow the directions and the finding impact of the Planning Commission on this. Just have that in record.
I hear you. And I have to admit, part of the reason why I don't support what the Planning Commission did is that it's not consistent with our comprehensive plan. I mean, that's part of our challenge right now, is when they're coming up with findings of fact, even if we would deny this, I would personally say we need to come up with different reasons. So I'm telling you, Commissioner Mergan, that's, that's an issue I have. I totally respect your, your desire to follow their lead. I get that.
And I believe they did follow our comprehensive plan.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, any further comments? I half thought you were going to make a motion to table.
The horse is dead.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Nay.
Commissioner Mergan.
Nay.
Commissioner Notch.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate your being here today. Let's move to our next agenda item, administration.
Commissioner Clark, could we possibly take a break here for?
We absolutely could take a break. I almost asked you. I knew it wasn't in here, but I kind of could use one too. Let's take a, let's take a short break. Thank you, Commissioner Mergan.
Thank you.
Mergan.
We're in recess. Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your, your item today is to adopt the preliminary levy. This item starts on packet page 249, and then there's an executive summary of the, of the preliminary, the proposed budget on page 249. As we, as we all know, but I'll state it for the, for the public's information, is that what you do here today is you establish a preliminary budget and a preliminary levy. And that will be the subject of the public hearing that will be held on November 30th, and then your final adoption of the budget is in December. So you really aren't going to adopt your final budget for close to 90 days from today. We have the, have the opportunity to make changes to this in between now and then, although once you adopt this preliminary levy, we cannot, you cannot increase the levy for 2022 any higher than you established today. So that's, that's the action that's being proposed today. And, and as you saw in the, in the packet, in the executive summary, we, we have a budget that does increase the tax levy by four and a quarter percent. It's about three and a half million dollars. It, the tax rate will go down very slightly. And I did highlight in there really some of the major things that are driving the expenditure side of that budget. It is a, it is a 13% in, or an 8% increase in expenditures, but a 13% increase in revenues. But if you look at those total expenditures, we've got a big increase in highway construction. And we also have in here a significant use of the project fund, which is a use of fund balance to finance some, some what I would call extraordinary one-time expenditures and some arguably that use of fund balance that we will have to make up in the future. As far as our employee costs, we do not have any of our labor agreements settled for 2022 and beyond. Those negotiations will begin next month and hopefully be concluded by the end of the year. 2022 is an election year, which is driving this budget up some $750,000. And then, as we talked about, our debt obligations are reduced in 2022, but we're proposing to keep that portion of the levy at the, well, actually at an increased level in anticipation of a major expenditure in a jail justice center coming in, in the next few years. Those are, those are really what, what's driving those, those expenditures to the, for the most part. And revenues are making up some of those, some of those expenditures, but we still have an increase in the tax levy of four and a quarter percent. Also included in the, in the executive summary is a, is a, is a look at what, what this, what the proposed tax levy will do to normal properties, and you can see that on packet page 254. For example, a homestead property valued at $200,000 is going to see sort of an average of a 6, 6.1% increase in the tax, in their final bill because the average increase in residential properties is about five and a half percent. Now, not all are going to be an increase of five and a half percent. Some would be less and some could be more. That's just an average to, to give you a feel for in general what, what that tax rate's going to do to the various property classifications. So all in all, as you can see, you have a budget there that has a, has an 8.2 increase in expenditures, a 13% increase in revenues, and a four and a quarter percent increase in the, in the tax lev, the total tax levy. And, and again, your action today sets in motion the notice for the truth and tax station hearing on November 30th, at which time you will hear any comments from the public. And then at your next, at your meeting in December, you will, you will need to enact the final budget for 2022. I'm happy to try to answer any questions. And we have Ms. Suits and Mr. Schifels here as part of the budget committee to, to help answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Notch.
I just had one, and this goes back to the last meeting we had, and I probably should have forwarded the request, but I just noticed it last night. So on the, on the, the budget expense sheet from 2021 to 2022, I was just curious, under human services, you know, they had the requested amount, but the recommended amount was higher. You know, same with, than when you put levy expense. Just curious what that was attributed to.
Yeah, the, the original request did not, didn't, we have, we have an estimate of what our personnel cost will be because we don't have any labor agreements. And that, that initial request, there was none allocated for that in that human services levy, I think is what the, what all that was. Yeah.
Okay. So it wasn't really?
So it really, really is, it really wasn't an increase. It was just a moving around of some, some funds, moving around of the budget. So there's a lump sum that we distributed out of the general fund and into there as an expenditure. That makes sense.
Yes. Mr. Schifels, did you have something else you wanted to add to that?
No, that was, that was it. It was a reallocation of estimate of personnel.
The resolution, resolution is at the end of the, of the package on page 256, is the simple resolution to, to adopt the preliminary levy.
Did you have any other questions or comments or?
I guess I would support this up to the point where the new construction and the additional TIF money, that increase, which is over 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million extra, I would support it up to that point. And I, I still have really, really strong feelings about taxpayers being forced to supplement outside agencies. Taxpayers should be able, if they wish to support that agency, they should be able to donate to that on their own. For instance, St. Cloud Greater Development, St. Cloud Downtown Council, St. Cloud Area Convention Center. I, I got a real issue with that stuff and the Tri County Humane Society, which we already pay whenever, whenever we use them. People wish to donate to those, they should be able to. The people from Sack Center and El Rosa should not be forced to. And, and those, just those four right there is more than $30,000.
Well, I believe, and Dr. Williams, I don't know if you have any comments. I mean, I know the board has, over the last several years, cut back on, on some of that. The Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation actually does work with businesses and economic development throughout much of our five districts, not through all of them, but through much of it. And in some ways, our partnership with them ends up being the economic, one of our economic development tools. So to me, that's different than making a donation. We're not making a donation. It actually is something that we are participating with. And then the downtown council, that has certainly reduced over time. Again, part of that's because we have so many employees and our, and our services people coming in here, so trying to be working together with others. Those, that and the convention and visitors, visitors bureau, those are different to me than if we are making donations to other entities. I know we've been contacted by RSVP, hoping that we would give, broaden what they, you know, a contribution to them so they could do more services, blah, blah, blah. I mean, we do have people that have done there. Those to me, Commissioner, for me, are different than, than perhaps some of the other ones that's been on there. And we've moved really to a contract base for the rest of those. We're not making grants per se, kind of just open-ended grants. We have contracts with those others.
Madam Chair, that this.
Dr. Williams.
Yes, this, the list of the outside agency that, that we support is quite a bit shorter than it was five years ago. And those that are on here, a number of these have been reduced considerably. Greater St. Cloud Development has been reduced, the downtown council was reduced down to a point where I felt, I felt that it's more in line with us as a member of the downtown, not in supporting it any differently than any other businesses, kind of where we, where we left that. And I can't even remember all of what was on this list before because it's been a few years. We, we cut them in half, I think, the first year, and then eliminated a number of them in, in the second year, which would have been, I think, 2018. But yeah, so.
And I personally have thought that your points have been really good about this, Commissioner Mergan, in terms of who are we just granting money to? With most of these, we have a relationship and it's kind of a reciprocal situation where we're getting some value out of it. And the amounts that we were contributing at one point seemed more like it was assisting and subsidizing versus what another, a business would be, be, be participating. So I think the fruit of your work has certainly been seen. I'm much personally sure that eliminating a couple of these would be beneficial to our own interests.
Another one that I have a strong feeling about I missed on here, would add another 10,000, so it would be over 40,000 right there, is the Initiative Foundation. This is one that I thought we had eliminated a while back, and now here they're back on here. When they were questioned at one time, they were making up their own statistics about people, farmer, farm children being, what was it? Commissioner Lenzmeyer might remember that. And then, then we asked for their 990 form, and they were redacting things off the 990 form. And I thought at that time we had eliminated them. And now here they're appearing again the last couple of years.
Dr. Williams.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mergan, I think, I think that it's been funded at that $10,000 levy since I've been here anyway. And they've, they've requested more than that in most recent years, when they put 10 in there. I, I can't speak to prior to my time here.
It's, I think, but I, I thought we had eliminated them, but I'm, did we? Is that your recollection, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Commissioner Notch.
The only thing I'd say on Initiative Foundation is, coming from a financial background, I look at it more as a. I look at it more as an assistance to, you know, our small businesses and individuals in the county because they provide, you know, low interest, no interest grants and loan funds to individuals to help, you know, start their businesses or to create ideas. So, I kind of look at them that more as a partnership than maybe as an expense just going out as a membership, you know. So, to me, that one, you know, I can see us doing a little support in the grand scheme of things, you know. Yeah, every nickel makes a difference. But, you know, in the grand scheme of our overall budget, you know, it's something that isn't going to make a drastic impact one way or the other.
And that's kind of where, again, we're leveraging resources on our own. That $10,000 wouldn't be sufficient to offer those services, but in combination with others, rather like the GSDC, it means that there's some services being able to do, be done for our businesses and communities that otherwise might not be. Commissioner Mergan, did you have another?
Yeah, but our budget is made up of probably thousands of small things, which, when you add them up, they become-
Well, and again, we don't have staff designated. We could, lots of counties have staff that are designated to do this, which would cost us a heck of a lot more money. I mean, to me, this is actually a more financially prudent way of offering some services that are often parts of what counties do. It's just that we're doing it as part of a community partnership. Mr. Lenzmeyer?
All incentives to private sector entities are not created equal. Things like tax income and financing, tax abatements, et cetera, are appropriate for large entities because of the soft costs involved in organizing and requesting them. But it doesn't make sense for small businesses. And things like Initiative Foundation, you know, you don't have to agree with me, but my perspective is this is a way for us to assist or be involved with them. It's not clean, it's not equal. It's sometimes not easy to explain, but we do need a presence in both sectors, in my opinion.
Commissioner Nott?
And maybe at some point, I know at one time since I was a commissioner, I think they actually came and did a presentation-
That would be a good idea.
-to the board. And, you know, maybe that's an option, too. Then we can ask them questions and they can show us the data, you know, of what they have been doing for businesses in the county.
Well, one of the things that's happening later this week is they are putting on presentations with regard to broadband. So, they've also been working with local businesses, municipalities, counties, including us, on how to be actually really doing it. So, there's some breadth there. I know that's not specifically what these funds are for, but there is some other value that we get from participating with them.
Commissioner Nott?
Yeah, and I guess at this point, because we're just adopting the preliminary, I mean, I'm okay with, you know, adopting the preliminary at the four and a quarter, but I guess I'd like to see the final come in somewhere in between a two and a three percent.
Yeah, we can go down from here, we can't go up.
Right. So, I guess that would be my charge is if I'm going to make the motion to adopt the preliminary levy, that I'd like to see it final come in between two and three percent versus four and a quarter.
I was wondering with that, and I'm sorry, I know you've got a motion on the floor, so we should get a second, but if you could remind us what the transportation amount is, what that, what the difference is with or without looking at that. I mean, I know that that's part of the reason why this amount's a bit more.
Ma'am Chair, actually, the levy portion-
The levy, I'm sorry.
...of the road construction is, is the same, is the same.
Okay.
So, we have additional quarter percent sales tax that's supporting that and intergovernmental revenues as well.
Okay, okay. I am totally with you. I don't know with our contracts being out whether that we will get there, but it would be great to get there. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adopt this. Certainly hoping that we can get to a lower number. Any further comments?
But I'm going to vote against it just because I know the history of the preliminary levy adoption and the final levy. We always talk about where else it can go down, but I know the history of this.
Okay, all right. Okay, then, I'll, you know, I think we might as well go ahead and go to a roll call, Randy, because we know we're going to get there.
Commissioner Mergan?
Me.
Commissioner Nott?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Thank you. Quite well taken. Yes, Dr. Williams?
I do know the history as well, although last year we did bring a final budget that was less than-
That was last year.
Yep. From, yeah, last-
I think that's the first one.
I understand.
Great. Anything else from the administration? Okay, then let's go ahead and go to issues by Commissioner. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I attended the Threshing Show in Albany over the weekend, and I hadn't been there in a number of years. That has turned into a very impressive venue and event. And plus, it's been expanded to four days. I think if you consider what there's like 40, 45 acres of that site is the permanent grounds for that. And what they do for parking is short-term arrangements with adjacent property owners. In my opinion, that show, and I'll bet you this would be consistent with their required filings as a 501(c)(3), that's bigger than the county fair. It's turned into, it's in 49th, 47th year. And there's a, it's a, it's got to be a source of local community pride. And when you look at their success in enlisting the assistance of volunteers, it's a remarkable event these days.
That's great. Commissioner Mergan?
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Nott?
I went to on Friday, you know, and it's, it has, those things have their pluses and minuses. Boy, that traffic in downtown Albany, I mean, it creates a log jam because there's people coming and going. But I tell you what, between the motels and the convenience stores, restaurants, I mean, it's, yeah, it is definitely a boost coming off of last year when things really weren't happening. Other than that, yeah, I don't really have anything either, ma'am chair.
Okay, that's great. Well, I guess one small thing I've noted, or two things. One, as we do of the conversation we'll be having about broadband, we'll be participating in that this week. And MACCAK is also going on, and one of the few in-person gatherings and getting a chance to listen and learn more and be able to brag on what we're doing with community corrections is always a good thing. And because Ms. Huberty is sitting in here, I would say, our domination of bocce ball, which may not sound like important stuff, but it's important business. Anything else from anybody? Otherwise, we're adjourned for today. Thank you.